Roll call for City Council Executive Session for August tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, Councillor Alexander.
Yes.
Councillor Tracy.
Here.
Councillor Hartman.
Here.
Councillor Todd.
Here.
Councillor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Stimple. And Councillor Ripley.
Uh, Ripley, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, the Gladstone City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two six six zero two F. To consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Recognized representatives of the news media and council authorized staff members may attend the executive session. All other persons must leave the room, the Zoom, and are respectfully requested to do so now. Members of the media are specifically directed not to report on the topics discussed and the deliberations that occurred during the executive session. City councillors are similarly reminded not to discuss executive session topics and deliberations with any third party. This includes without limitation, family members, other appointed officials such as planning commission members, library advisory board members, et cetera, city staff and volunteers, members of the public and members of the media. The presence of the media while the city's legal counsel is discussing matters with the council is not intended to nor does it waive the attorney-client privilege that attaches to those communications and any related documentation. If a final decision on the matter is necessary, the council will make that decision when it is in a regular session. Thank you very much, and now we will adjourn into executive session.
Uh, so I called over to the Gladstone City Council meeting Civic Center Council Chambers. Basically, it's August tenth, two thousand and twenty-one at six thirty P M. J- Tammy, will you do the, uh, call the roll, please?
Councillor Ripley. Councillor Ripley, are you able to unmute? We'll come back to you.
Oh, okay, there we go.
There we go.
I'm here.
Councillor Alexander.
Yes.
Councillor Hartman.
Here.
Councillor Todd.
Here.
Councillor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Stimple. Councillor Tracy.
Here. So let's go ahead and stand for the pledge of, I'm sorry. Tammy, did you have one more?
No, I think I've got everyone.
Okay, so let's go ahead and stand for the flag sleigh, pledge of allegiance. I pledge the allegiance to the
of the United States and to the
Republic for which it stands, one nation
under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I will now read the Governor's Executive Order twenty point sixteen regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws. The city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during this coronavirus pandemic. This public hearing will be conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. We do have attendees, so there are folks who have called in. Uh, tonight, do we have any agenda additions or corrections, staff?
Uh, thank you, councillor, I do have one addition that I notified the council earlier tonight. Ray's Market has a change in management and they have submitted an O L C C license that we have forwarded to you and would like to add that to the consent agenda. Staff has no issues with approval of the license. So we can add that as a new number nine under the consent agenda.
Does the rest of the council feel comfortable with that being read into the consent agenda as it was read by City Administrator Betz? I'll go, I will go ahead and go down the consent agenda. Is everybody okay with that, or do we want to reread that into the consent agenda? Everybody?
I'm okay.
Just nod or thumbs up. Okay, Jackie, I think you, you've basically read it into the agenda, the consent agenda, so I'll go down the consent agenda now. So, uh, in the consent agenda, we have approval of July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, City Council meeting. We have the approval of June bank balances. We have the approval of, or we have the budget report for the period ending six thirty, two thousand and twenty-one. We have approval of the June check register. I'm sorry, am I not, yeah, I'm on the right one? Is this June or July? I'm sorry, are we looking at June?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, great. Legal costs on projects are covered in the consent agenda. Department head monthly reports for July two thousand and twenty-one are in the consent agenda. We also have the approval of Oregon Impact Traffic Safety High Visibility Enforcement Grant for the Police Department. The approval of Department of Land Conservation and Development, or known as D L C D, grant for housing code audit. Jackie, do we have any correspondence?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go down the regular agenda. Agenda number nine will be ordinance one five one-two, it's an ordinance amending Gladstone Municipal Code, Chapter one point zero eight point zero nine zero, pertaining to charges for verification of vehicle compliance. Agenda item number ten is Meldrum Bar Park Master Site Plan. Agenda item number eleven is reserved play fee schedule for Gladstone user groups and non-user groups at Meldrum Bar Park. Agenda item number twelve is the Gladstone Fire Department remodel to improve emergency response times. Agenda item number thirteen is the appointment of members to the Gladstone, Gladstone Needed Housing Advisory Committee. Agenda item fourteen is the Clackamas Review Public Records Release Request. We'll then go into business carried forward, business from the audience and business from the council. Are there any questions about the agendas that's been read? Okay, moving forward, has everyone reviewed the consent agenda? And if so, are there any questions or discussions? Thank you, Greg, or
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to, um, I'd already asked about this, wanted everyone to know, so on this approval of the bank balances, my question and, and I asked today, Jackie, I just wanted everyone to know, so I asked why we were still using U S Bank up there, that was on McLaughlin, it's not anymore, any longer, and so. And then, uh, she, she explained it to me, I didn't know if you wanted to let everyone know exactly what, what we're doing there with that, or.
Uh, this fall, the city will be going through requests for proposals to solicit new banks and credit unions for our banking services. It is a long process, but we're hoping to start beginning of that in the fall.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none. Somebody want to make a motion to vote on the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the addition of number nine, the liquor license application for Ray's Market.
I'm second.
Okay, so motion was put on the table by, uh, Councillor Garlington, seconded by Councillor Hartman. Any other further discussion? Can I verify, uh, Councillor Garlington, did you, you said move with the addition of, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Getting cut out a little bit too, so, and I'm not sure if it's my connection or if everybody's getting that.
I, I will, I will say in our earlier meeting, you did drop out a couple of times, so I, I don't know if it's a video taking all your bandwidth or what have you, do what you need to, to adjust if you want to. You did cut out earlier. Yes, thank you.
I'm having the same problem, Councillor Garlington.
Thank you. He.
Again, hearing no, uh, further discussion, we go ahead and, uh, Tammy, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councillor Ripley?
Yes.
Councillor Alexander.
Yes.
Councillor Tracy.
Hi.
Councillor Hartman.
Hi.
Councillor Todd.
Yes.
Councillor Garlington.
Yes.
Okay, I believe that the consent agenda is passed. Bear with me, I'm kind of going back and forth here trying to put these notes together. All right, we're on to, uh, agenda item number nine, ordinance one five one-two, propose to increase the fix-it ticket administrative fee, staff.
Thank you, Councillor Tracy. Uh, Judge Lindgren is available tonight and she's going to go over the staff report about what she's asking the city council to amend.
Welcome, Judge Lindgren.
Thank you, sorry, um, you can see my son there, I think. Can you all see me? So here's my video.
We saw your son.
We saw my cute son about ten years ago. Um, thank you, sorry about that. Um, I just wanted to raise the issue for City Council. Um, the fix-it fee has not been addressed since two thousand and three. Obviously, costs to the city staff and police department have increased and the presumptive fines have increased, um, every few years since two thousand and three as well. Um, and then our fix-it fee has not been addressed, um, for some time. So these are situations where, like, um, somebody fixes their registration, they might fix a muffler, mud flaps, those types of things. They come in, they show proof, and then we dismiss it with the administrative fee. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention to see if City Council would want it, would want to increase that fee. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councillor Alexander, did I see your hand up?
Oh, no, I was getting the, the mute thing, but I just, so it says the increase to fifty dollars will cover the increase of the staff cost to the city. So I, I would think that would be probably a good thing. That's, that's how, that's what I think.
Anyone, uh, else?
Looks like Councillor Hartman.
Councillor Hartman, see you there now, finally, thanks.
Thank you. Um, I had a question in terms of like comparison to other cities. And if, if you had any data on what their fix-it ticket cost is.
You know, I haven't, that's a good question. Um, I haven't done a comparison with other cities in Clackamas County. Um, in Saint Helens, where I'm also the judge, as you know, it's fifty dollars. Um, but I could get that additional information, um, from the other cities.
Yeah, I think my purpose of asking is just to make sure that we are comparable, you know, and coming out of COVID, people are just getting jobs back and getting money back for fixing, but I know that you are very fair and when they come back, and so I just want everyone watching to know that we're, I'm, you know, we're being mindful that, uh, you know, we have options for them as well and that we're not, we're comparable with other cities. That's all I have.
Is there any other discussion or questions? Does anybody want to make a motion on this agenda item?
I'll make a motion that we recommend the approval of ordinance number fifteen twelve, proposed increase to fix-it ticket administrative fee.
I also want to clarify that because this is an ordinance, we should probably read the full title on page nine dash four. If Councillor Alexander wants to read that, that would be great.
All right. An ordinance amending chapter one point zero eight of the Gladstone Municipal Code, establishing an assessment for vehicle compliance, reaffirming all remaining provisions of chapter one point oh eight of the Gladstone Municipal Court Code.
Perfect.
So Gregor, you've got a motion on the table, do we have a second?
One second.
Councillor Alexander made a motion to, um, put ordinance fifteen twelve to the vote, uh, seconded by Councillor Todd. Do we have any further discussion? Tammy, we call a roll, please. Roll vote.
Councillor Todd.
Yes.
Councillor Garlington.
Yeah.
Councillor Ripley.
Yes.
Councillor Alexander.
Yes.
Councillor Hartman.
Hi.
Councillor Tracy.
Yes, and could we recall, uh, Councillor Garlington's vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you, councillor, I, you, you faded out, sorry about that. Okay, passes.
And because it passed unanimously, you get to do a second reading tonight, so if Councillor Alexander wants to read it again, then we'll go through that second reading process.
He does, right? I do. An ordinance amending chapter one point zero eight of the Gladstone Municipal Code, establishing an assessment for vehicle compliance, reaffirming all remaining provisions of chapter one point oh eight of the Gladstone Municipal Code.
City Administrator Betz, are we good with that particular agenda item?
I believe we need to do one more vote.
That's what I thought, okay.
You need a second, again?
Yes.
So, motion and vote, I think we need the motion first, don't we?
I think Councillor Alexander's reading into the record was fine for the motion and Councillor Todd's second, I think now you just need a final vote.
All right, let's go down, Tammy, will you please call the rolls out, please?
Councillor Todd.
Yes.
Councillor Garlington.
Yes.
Councillor Ripley.
Yes.
Councillor Alexander.
Yes.
Councillor Hartman.
Hi.
Councillor Tracy.
All right. Motion passes second time, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Judge Lindgren, appreciate your help with this.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, agenda item number ten, consider authorizing the city administrator to enter into a contract with Environmental Sciences Associates, or also known as E S A, to complete, uh, the, to complete the Meldrum Bar Park Master Site Plan, staff.
Thank you, Councillor Tracy. The city council has gone through a pretty extensive process since two thousand and seventeen of working on its master planning for our park system. Part of that was identifying a city council goal to complete the Meldrum Bar Park Master Plan. So the city recently issued a request for proposals and we advertised that through the Oregon Procurement Information Network and on the city's website. We also individually contacted a number of landscape architect firms to elicit interest in the effort. Our closing date was in June on the twenty-fourth. We had five responses to the R F P, very good qualified responses, and we assembled a team of evaluators to help us go through the scoring and to interview. The people on the selection committee were Mayor Tammy Stimple, Councillor Mindy Garlington, Councillor Anessa Hartman, Parks and Recreation Board Chair John Eichsted, Parks and Recreation Board Member Ellen Faber, myself, and Acting Public Works Director Darren Canaparoli. We also had our consultant, John Southgate, who facilitated the process and the selection after the interviews. We are very happy to say that the committee unanimously identified E S A to do the work with this. They have identified five tasks and in your staff report, you will see that the total cost of this project is just under seventy-five thousand dollars. The funds will be expended from the city's general fund parks budget and the project will begin in late August if the council approves this tonight and we're hoping to have the completion done in two thousand and twenty-one. If there's any member of the selection committee that's either on tonight or would like to provide comments, they certainly will, but we're very excited about the work the Environmental Science Associate is going to complete on this. They have extensive background with environmental work in flood zones and especially along the Willamette River. They care very much about the community engagement aspect at this and we are very confident that they are going to do a very thorough and delicate job on doing the site plan for the community. So with that, if Councillor Hartman or Councillor Garlington wanted to offer any insights to this, what we're asking the council to approve tonight is to authorize myself to enter into a contract not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars with Environmental Science Associates to complete the Meldrum Bar Park Master Site Plan.
Um, I'd just like to make one comment. Um, out of transparency, that, um, I was on the Parks Board meeting last night and I did hear that, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Canaparoli, that E S A is also taking over the Reinerson Project, um, which is a continuing project on the, um, redevelopment of that natural parcel there. So I just want to make sure that that's said out loud. I mean, I think it's a good thing, I think it, that makes, you know, this entire project or this entire park is, you know, they see the whole picture, so I like it, I just think that it should be said.
And I do want to clarify, I believe that E S A is taking over preparation of the monitoring reports away from Columbia Restoration, but I don't believe they're taking over the development piece of that.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
You're welcome.
The only comment that I was going to make is that, you know, I just want to point out that this group has already spent, as they say in the, in their report, you know, a hundred hours, you know, observing our boat ramp and our park and they really put a lot of thought into their proposal and they chatted with our patrons, they really care about community engagement, not just from ourselves and our park board, but from our community. And we're, um, the only ones to dedicate a, um, or build a website specifically for this with an online tool and so that we can really reach a lot of our community and not just like a select few. And that was one of my big reasons here. Um, and they really, really just had a really, um, really, you could feel the ownership that they wanted to take this on and they were really proud to even just present to us, um, to, to, to do this. So I just wanted to share that, those are some of the reasons that I like this group.
Councillor Tracy, I do believe we have public comment on this item tonight as well.
Okay, um, let's, uh, Councillor Garlington, you have your hand up.
I just want to make one more, uh, point to, to piggyback on what, uh, Councillor Hartman was saying, that one of the things that was really nice about these, uh, this group also is that they're treating the pro, the park project as pieces of a puzzle that they will then bring together. So they understand that we have this and this and this and this, and it's not just this lumped idea of what's good for the park as a whole, they're really treating each entity of the park as, as, as separate items and how to bring about each pod together to bring our community together in this large park. So that, that was another thing that we all really, I think, appreciated about that their going forward with, with all of their ideas, so I understand we have people to talk, so we're just excited.
Thank you, um, I didn't have any other comments, uh, I am glad to see, other than I'm glad to see that they're going to have a fairly robust community engagement program and I think that we're learning a lot about Meldrum Bar and reaching out to our community, um, with our last, uh, moves that we made out there with the, with the tolls or the pay station. So I appreciate that. The other question I have, though, Administrator, City Administrator Betz is, what is the synchronicity between these two projects? Now, the Reinerson project, Reinerson project, uh, is a wetland restoration project, is it not? So I know that we, we would like to sync up, but obviously we're not allowing, I mean, there's not a lot of access on that particular project, it's interesting, so these folks are going to be monitoring that project while at the same time potentially working on our park, which is good. I just, I've always wondered, like, how are we going to have some kind of synchronicity after that project was completed?
And I think this is a good start to that. Tomorrow, the Public Works Director, Police Chief and I will be on site with the Homeowners Association and Robin Hood to go through this project together, they're very excited about this site plan as well. And so we really want to have that cohesive collaboration with them. And I think this is how you synchronize it, is we, you bring us all together, so they are also part of this site plan.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other discussion on this, uh, agenda item? Hearing none, if somebody would like to propose to yes, I'm sorry.
We have public comment, would you?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's correct, I'm sorry, Tammy, we got, we got sidetracked on the conversation, so yes, we should hear from the public now.
We have one and it is Mark Zimpbaum.
Mr. Zimpbaum, welcome in.
Hello, how are you all tonight? Uh, good, you can hear me. Um, I've just been doing a lot of part, uh, research on the parks and I see two different master plans so far. The citywide master plan and then the nature mark, uh, nature park master plan. Um, and I just, I'm curious, are, how binding are these agreements? Um, because it seemed like the, the two thousand and seventeen Gladstone Citywide Nature Park, or excuse me, citywide, uh, site park plans, uh, called for the Meldrum Bar Site Plan to be done already and since that time, we've instituted fees that I'm not sure if we have a destination for, but I'll get to some of that later. But, so just in general, how binding are these master site plans? Um, and then my second question was going to be about the community involvement. Um, there again, the master site plan from two seven, two thousand and seventeen had two thousand residents mailed a survey, which we never received. Uh, and then the, um, Gladstone Nature Park had, uh, input from, I believe it was a hundred and twelve participants, um, which is not Gladstone, full of Gladstone, so just is, just wanted to get some information on that. I have no background as far as which company should be the thing, I'm just wondering more about these site, uh, park site plans. Thank you, that's all.
Staff, do you have some, anything to, to add to that, or should we just, um, work out?
I'm happy to visit with, uh, Mr. Zipmom outside of this. I will say that the community engagement process, we want people exactly like him to participate in that, it will be robust. The site plans, as far as they're not legally binding, but it's always good for cities to have proposals of what they plan on doing on public property. And so this is a very large regional park and it's very important that we do have a site plan established. We will be encouraging all of the current user groups to participate in this as well. But it's really our guiding document going forward on what kind of projects or sports we're going to want to encourage in Meldrum Bar Park.
Thank you for that. Tammy, do we have any further public comment?
We do not.
There is, is there any further discussion within the council?
No.
Hearing none, does anybody want to make a motion for the to vote on, uh, the recommended action for this particular agenda?
Um, make a motion to approve the city administrator to enter into a contract with Environmental Science Associates to complete the Meldrum Bar Park Master Site Plan.
Your second?
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion was made by Councillor Hartman, it was seconded by, I think, in, in duo by Councillor Ripley and Councillor Alexander. Tammy, will you call the vote, please?
Councillor Hartman.
Hi.
Councillor Todd.
Yes.
Councillor Garlington.
Yes.
Councillor Ripley.
Yes.
Councillor Alexander.
Yes.
Councillor Tracy.
Yes. Motion passes. Motion passes. Thank you. So we're on to agenda item number eleven. Reserve play fee schedule for Gladstone user groups and non-user groups at Melton Bar Park. Staff?
Thank you, councillor Tracy. For this item, I'm gonna ask our acting public works director to go over the staff report and our recommendation.
Thank you, Jackie and council. Um, in September of twenty seventeen, the city council approved the Gladstone Citywide Mark. A parks master plan. This plan includes implementation of the parks utility fees. Uh, to facilitate funding of the ongoing park operation maintenance. In twenty nineteen, the Parks and Recreation Board began discussion regarding updating implemented. Implementing park user fees. The discussion included park fees and user fees. The current city, the, the city currently has park and recreation user fees. Uh, for use of ball fields, youth organizations. Organizations have been exempt from these fees. In October twenty nineteen, members of Gladstone Youth Association attended a. Attended the Park and Recreation Board meeting to discuss receiving feedback regarding these fees. In twenties, in January of twenty twenty, it was determined that the city would begin implementing. The current park user fees for any and all users. Due to the twenty nineteen pandemic, the, the parks were closed. Youth associations were unable to schedule the util- schedule and utilize city parks. Therefore, no fees were implemented. In June of twenty twenty, the city attorney's office conducted title searches for the Melton Bar. Art deeds for all different parcels to make sure there were no restrictions implementing fees for park use. The search concluded there were no restriction. City staff completed a survey of park user fees in June of twenty twenty-one for surrounding areas. On July of twenty, July twelfth, twenty twenty-one, staff brought this matter back to the park board as requested by city council. In accordance with the staff recommendation, the park board voted to hold off on assessing field slash port. Usage fees until after the completion of the Melton Bar site. Well, but cost impact based on estimated registration numbers and tournaments for the Gladstone user groups. Adopting the proposed master fee schedule could possibly generate approximately eleven thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars to thirteen thousand. Six hundred and twenty-five dollars per year. The per, per, proposed fee schedule for reserve. Reserve play for Gladstone user groups considers the amount of staff time it takes to calculate charges for each. Team per usage, per group based on hourly rate. A flat fee on registered players greatly reduces. The amount of. Staff time that it would take to, that it would take to um, tracking practices, games, this being an overall benefit for the city. Since two thousand seventeen, the city of Gladstone has been tasked with researching new revenue sources. For maintaining the enhancing our park system. One recommended option was. Excuse me, was to change sports fees or was to charge sports user fees in Gladstone. This became particularly our priority before the COVID pandemic. Staff has met with members of all user groups multiple times and has presented a fair and equitable proposal. Or proposed master fee schedule. However, however, because of implementation of the parking fee at Melton Bar Park. Has delayed, has, was delayed due to the pandemic. Staff believes that timing and implement, implement, implementing the sports fees. Is not optimum. Now that non-residents are contributing to the cost of park operations currently supported by, only by Gladstone taxpayers. We recommend that the sports user fees be revisited once the city has completed the site. Plan from Melton Bar Park to determine if the. User fees continue to be a recommended source of revenue for maintaining our parks. Staff also recommends that the city uh, convey a unified user group or user group. Subcommittee to discuss potential solutions to bring back the track, back to city council. The ma- the makeup of the committee should, should include three city council members, two parks and recreation board members. And a representative from pickleball, softball, soccer and baseball. And the appropriate, appropriate city staff. Options. Do not approve city staff recommendation and direct staff to bring an updated. Master fee schedule resolution to the city council in September. Option two, council could decide on a different approach. Option three, accept app. Accept recommended staff action. Any questions?
Thank you, director. Uh, are there any que- questions from council? Councillor Alexander?
Yeah, I just know going forward, any, any discussion. About anything, I believe all the people he just mentioned should be, should be represented and within the same room. I mean, that's just how, that's just how it needs to be, so there's no more confusion or anything. And uh, and maybe this, the. The fee being implemented right now does help and we don't have to, because I, I know all the, I talked to a lot of people in this community. A lot of them don't think. Kids, there should be no sports user fees for our kids in our community. And I'm gonna stand by that. And that's just how it is. And so I think they need to be a part of every discussion. And if you read. In the packet what they gave us, they're willing to do a lot of extra work to improve the park, to improve. You know, uh, things for the kids, for, for our community. So, you know, I think they need to be uh, listened to and given the benefit of the doubt. And, and, and all these discussions going forward. That's, that's my thought on it. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Alexander. And I just want to add, the reason why. Our director went through all the history and background is because you can see a lot of work has been put into this. But staff agrees the timing is not right. We do believe that we need to sit down and have closer conversations. That's why we're recommending that we put the user fees on hold. And if you agree tonight to do the same, we'd like you to. Uh, nominate three members of city council that would be interested in helping with us. And then we can go through and start having some unified meetings to talk to the user groups.
Are there any other questions or comments about this? Uh, councillor Hartman?
Thank you. Um, it's more of a comment similar to what councillor Alexander was saying. Um, and just so I can go on the record. I had the wonderful opportunity of meeting with John, Scott, Tim, Dana and Jeff all at the same time. And um, I have to just say and share, you know, there were moments of embarrassment for me because. They shared with me that great, councillor Alexander and I, you know, from the council level, we're the only ones ever in the fourteen years of some of the organizations. Ever reach out to them and really listen to what they have to say. And some of these emails and comments that they've made, you know, are concerning. Um, and one of the biggest thing is that they haven't received the same platform that. Some of the other organizations like Pickleball have received. The one, you know, one or two meetings that they've had. Opportunities to speak or provide comment in the past three years um, is not enough compared to what they do for our youth. They are nonprofit organizations who provide free sports to those who are on. Uh, you know, lunch free service at our schools. Like they do a lot for our community. And I want all of us to know how important it is. Um, to have those in our, in our city. And it's all volunteer based as well, which I personally think is amazing. And most of them don't even have kids of their own within, they're still there. They're still servicing our youth that aren't even their own. And. And, and moving forward, I also want us to really pay attention to the comparable services that are listed here. And that if we start charging them. Um, we need to offer a good product instead of just saying, hey, we need this money. And, but you need to still do all of the work that you're doing. And so those are really the comments that I have. Um, I would like to throw my hat in to be a part of this subcommittee. Um, because I, I enjoy meeting with them and I just want to advocate really well for our nonprofit support. So, thank you.
Great points, councillor Hartman. I agree a hundred percent. And I would like to also volunteer beyond that committee.
Need one more.
Who's our third volunteer?
I have a question.
But I'll volunteer if you want to. I'll, I'll just say no volunteer and then you can guess the.
I'm sorry, councillor Garlandon, you had a question?
I just, I had a question um, about the user fee. Uh. If we don't approve the user fee, the master, the updated schedule, does that affect any other changes? That we have made to this besides the user groups at the ball fields?
We're not asking you to approve anything tonight.
Okay, I get. We've talked about some master fee schedules in the past, updates in the past. Does this affect any of that at all?
Not anything we. Uh, I'm not sure I'm understanding your question, but what, what we're asking council to do is. To concur with the parks board recommendation to not approve any user fees at this time. To convene a unified group to meet with the associations and then bring back. Some comparable data to the city council for an approval process.
Okay, I understand that. I just want to make sure that we're not going backwards in any of our user fees that we've already implemented. Or any of our master fee schedule in any way. But the answer clearly is no, so that's all.
These didn't exist. And councillor Garlandon, if I may, I, it, city administrator bets, these fees didn't exist under master fee schedule or, or. Did they existed at one time?
I believe that the issue that has always been maintained is the city does have user fees. In its master fee schedule, but they never charged for years. And we are still not charging. And we're not recommending that we charge. Until we have worked through, what are we going to charge the user groups and what are we gonna use that money for?
And the intent, I think, from staff's recommendation is to have proper representation on a committee to be able to work together. And accumulate engagement theater basically or environment to be able to go forward and decide how this will impact those sports groups.
Yes, and even though they were very appreciative of the staff time, they really did mention that they would like to have time with. Our elected officials and our board members. Yes.
So I, I'm understanding councillor Garlandon's question now and I don't. And so I don't think it impacts what we currently are doing or what, or what we have um, authorized or voted on for with regards to. Master user fee schedules across the city, right? This is not gonna impact that in any way.
That's correct.
Okay. Councillor Garlandon, how do you feel about that? Is that getting close to answering your question?
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Oh, councillor Todd?
Uh, councillor Todd. Hey, um, I just wanted to say that I, I really like how this um. Feels very collaborative and I feel like there's been a, a lot of discussion on this from a, a lot of people. And until we have this like plan, until we know um. That th- those funds are even needed. I mean, you can always charge fees just to charge fees, but I don't think that's what any of us want to do, right? That, that if it's needed and to maintain those fields and to do, and, and that's the only way we can do it, then I think that. That's a different topic, but because we do have the Melton Bar uh, pass where um, our parking fee where. Non-residents are having to sort of chip in um, and, and not being on the backs of just the taxpayers. And our students and our kids playing sports. My kids played soccer for twelve years and softball and all the stuff too. So I totally, I understand it. Um, very well. I just, I really like how this feels, is all I wanted to say. And I feel like it's, it's very collaborative. And I, and I, I think when I think public works and all the staff that have put in so much time before this. But this is sort of where we should have been to begin with. So, thank you very much.
Councillor Ripley, I saw your hand up.
Um, I think what'd be really nice is if the council actually got together for a little work session and discussed the parks. The town is, the town's overturned right now because some of the stuff we're doing and we're keep making plans and changing and wanting to do stuff. But we've never, the seven of us have never actually sat down and discussed what we want as councillors for our parks. We need to actually discuss that because there's a lot of changes and there's a lot of other good changes that could come about. A lot of other things we can do that would benefit the community, but it's not always, it's not the right discussion for a city council meeting. It would be a good discussion for a work session. More of a round table. Everything, but if we don't start talking about stuff, we're never gonna get anywhere if we can't come together as a group and have some of these discussions and. Come to some conclusions on stuff. But we need, we need to have that, we need to go and bounce ideas off of all. All of the councillors through a discussion. Because that's how, that's how you come up with answers to stuff is by having discussions with other people to have different points of view and see things differently. And you could, you could pull some people one direction. You might, you might change opinions. You might educate people, other people so that they. Might understand what you're saying and then they might agree, might be more willing to, to go along with something, but. We have to start getting together and actually talking besides a Zoom meeting. Once a month. That's all I got.
No, thank you for that. And I think I, I actually um. I agree. I think this is particular topic wouldn't, would probably merit a, a work session. I think we do need to talk about what we, we see in our parks. And now that we're changing things, um, obviously um, for the better, but. You know, we need to go ahead and discuss it amongst ourselves and have our folks uh, who are citizens here who have vested interests. Be able to weigh in. And I think that part of the Melton, Melton Bar site plan, at least I see a fairly significant chunk of it. Is dedicated to public engagement and I, I'm glad uh, to see that in that plan because it would be kind of alarming if it wasn't. Um, we've heard pretty loudly from our citizens, they want to be part of this process. I agree with you, councillor Ripley. I think that we should get in the room and start talking about our parks. Is there any other further discussion on this? Would somebody, oh, councillor Hartman, you have your arm up? No? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion? You have three options here. Uh, staff, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I think that I have received guidance that councillor Hartman, councillor Alexander and councillor Todd would like to be on. The unified user group and at this time, the city council concurs with staff's recommendation to not implement user fees.
All right, do you want, uh, are we gonna vote on this or do you wanna just agree that that's the option we're going for?
Let's go ahead and vote since we're on Zoom.
Okay. So you have three options there. Somebody want to put a motion forward, please?
I'll make a motion that we do not approve. Staff's recommendation and direct staff to bring an updated master fee schedule resolution to the city council in September. No.
You want option three.
We want option three, accept recommended staff action. Sorry about that. Thank you.
We were gonna sit in silence for a while.
I, I honestly would have thought that we would just go with the one that they recommended first. Following one, two and three.
I'll second that.
For clarification, oh, thank you, councillor Garlandon, you are putting forward option three, seconded by councillor Alexander. Is there any further discussion on this? And staff, do we have any public comment on this particular agenda item?
We do not have any public comment.
Okay, uh, seeing no further discussion needed for, wanted from the council, uh, Tammy, would you please call a roll vote?
Councillor Alexander?
Yes.
Councillor Ripley?
Yes.
Councillor Garlandon?
Yes.
Councillor Todd?
Yes.
Councillor Hartman?
Hi.
Councillor Tracy?
Hi. Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, this is uh, agenda item number twelve, which is Gladstone Fire Department remodel to improve emergency response times. Staff?
Thank you, councillor Tracy. Your fire chief, Rick Hefman, is on tonight and he's gonna go over a brief presentation. On the proposed remodel at the current fire department.
Good evening, councillors, uh, city administrator. Jeff, uh, I'd like to go ahead and review the information, um, the packet. Uh, to do that, I'll just give you a quick uh, review. Kind of confirm that you can see the slideshow.
That's an A for.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So the Gladstone Fire Station has been around for quite a while, but I'd like to kind of give you a review of why I'm presenting this tonight. In 2010, an organizational management evaluation kind of set in motion the goals and objectives that I'm working on now. This was based off of a stakeholder survey and service delivery analysis that resulted in the standards that cover and the fire department strategic plan that was adopted by council in 2018. I provided an update, I guess a report card, if you will, of the strategic plan this past February. And the attachment one in your packet references all the goals and objectives for remodeling and the station and to add crew quarters for improved response times. The current fire station layout was not designed for 24 hour operations and the condition of the facility is in need of a few upgrades. In 2019 through the 2021 biennial budget, there was facility funding for planned kitchen remodel and the air conditioner unit, which I did replace the air conditioning on the rooftop, but held back on other funding because of COVID and the move of city hall and the police station to the civic center. That move did bring up some, some needs to the fire station such as the priority was connecting to the fiber network so we can maintain data link, data transfer and use of city phones. That in the move of our security door system to temporary server room was funded by those, those dollars that I held off on spending. And in all honesty, there was $20,000 for a kitchen remodel, which in realistic terms is more of a kitchen facelift and really wouldn't have extended the life of the station for very much longer. Also, the use of apartment and the office space I'm currently in is part of the, the, the plan moving forward to improve response times by getting the crew quarters in the station. Office space was rented at a reasonable price across the state, the street. And that, the use of this office space also allow us to bring up the longer term issue of what the fire station needs by doing a fire station and fire department master plan for facilities. Bottom line, the remodel also extend the life of the station at least 10 years into the future. The remodel area itself is only the living space in the fire station. It does not include the truck there or any storage or outside areas. Basically, this is a, an overview of the station area. Let me show you here. As you can see in this area, that's the existing kitchen. That will be taken out and in that space will have three beds that can house firefighters. The space does not allow for privacy as far as individual rooms like most modern fire stations have, but we will have privacy dividers so that if we have different gender firefighters, we'd still have a level of privacy. And bottom line is when you have an open dorm that has limited privacy, usually you sleep in, let me rephrase that, I will have a policy that you sleep in shorts and, and t-shirts so that we'll have no issues. One of the major upgrades to the station for 24 hours is the dressing. We only have one bathroom that has a shower. That is, is inadequate. We need at least two showers to help decon firefighters after they come back from calls where they're exposed to either body fluids or chemicals or carcinogens or byproducts of combustion. So that'll happen in one of these bathrooms that they'll add another shower and have a doorway that goes to the door room, dorm room. The kitchen area will be in place of where the existing offices used to be for the fire marshal and the captain. And that'll allow for upgraded wellness for the firefighters, an ice machine and some other things that will help with the nutrition and wellness of their station, station life. Also, the, the surfaces are going to be upgraded so we can decon them. Sanitation has been, I won't say a struggle, but it's been a challenge, you know, with carpet and other surfaces with COVID in our normal sanitation. So that'll change all the surfaces. The estimated cost, there was an attachment that was going to be included, but the costs are changing. So really this is more about the estimation for an RFP that will go out. We're currently in the $150,000 range. Depending on if we get any variances that are approved. We currently have a alternative means and measures at the county for approval that would allow us to have a fire, a fire system that is only for life safety in the living area, which would be a lot cheaper than a full commercial fire protection system. We'll know if we get that, the alternative means and measures approved prior to next few weeks. Timeline, with all things in the current timeline, we should be able to finish this before the end of the year. The wild cards, of course, are the current supply chain issues and any backup and permit approval. But that is a realistic timeline according to the architect today. Really what we're asking for is, is permission to move forward because of the spending limitations of myself. I have to go through council to get your approval on this. We just want to move forward with the request for proposal process as outlined by city policy. I'm happy to answer any questions now.
I can't see anybody on this screen. Does anybody have any questions? Any of the counselors? I have a question, Chief Huffman. So I, I know that things have kind of gone back and forth or we don't have, do we have crew quarters or sleeping quarters in the new building, the annex building across the street? Or was that just designed as an office space?
That's correct. It is designed for office and storage only.
Okay. The other question I have is I see your build out cost on your, on your square foot. How confident are we in the numbers? I hear that, you know, you're looking at it not to exceed 150,000 or going out for RFP or RFP on 150,000. Have we been talking to contractors to get some estimates and is this, is this something that's close at 5844 square?
Currently, that's, that's correct. That is our, the recent information I was, I received from the architect. Like I said, I think those things are a little flexible because of the conditions, not only just in construction delays, but the supply chain.
Yeah.
One thing I failed to mention was that the, the funding for this, the capital cars cost is covered from the surplus revenue we received from the ladder truck, which was $350,000.
Yeah, I, I saw that. Okay, this is architects. These are the numbers coming from the architects. Reason I'm asking, Chief, is I'm, I'm involved in some public build outs right now and I haven't seen that number for a long time. So, and, and their office space build out. So I just wanted to, want to caution us because I, I'm, it's a very unreal terrain out there right now with regard to construction and costs.
Understood. I was told by the architect that because this is a lighter remodel without as much construction, there's not much build out of lumber. This is more of just a, more of a reorganization and reduction of wall space. So.
Yeah. So I mean, so you're talking about finishings and fixtures and, and we're not doing anything structural. So there, there's a possibility you could definitely meet that number. I just, I just want to caution us. I don't want us to go in kind of wide eyed and all of a sudden see 155 or $200 a square because that's, that's, that's a reality right now. So I just, just so we're eyes wide open. Thank you. Any other questions from the counselors? City administrative best, my question is how do, we can do the allocation based on the surplus. Is that correct? So the money can be moved to that.
Yes, it is budgeted to be expended in the fire department. So what we're asking for tonight is to permission to move forward with this. The fire chief will go out for a request for bids and that contract then will come back to council again for approval.
So my, my other question would be, Chief, I know that time is of the essence for this and you'd like to get this in place as quick as possible. Well, if, if we did go out and we did see some sticker shock, are you comfortable with backing down a little bit? We, we start watching what, what basically, what, what the economics and construction market's looking like and being able to, to remobilize at some point and not just have it go away because the cost may be exorbitant. Are you prepared for that or would you consider that?
I think that, that should be considered at some point. I think the, the first step would be that we would look at what the, the remodel contains and maybe make some cost savings within that, that, that would still give us the end result of crew quarters, but maybe with not as much upgrades. So I think that would be the ultimate caution that we would delay it. But in that delay, we also still continue to pay rent at the apartment. So.
Right. See, yeah. So you have other additional costs. I hear you. I just, I don't, I, I would hate for us to just put our heads down after seeing, you know, potential sticker shock. I just want us to be very, you know, cautious about that and hopefully, hopefully it wouldn't pivot the project into, to not being able to be completed.
No, sir. I think that, I think it's wise that we be careful with the taxpayer money and, and we'll definitely look at the best value.
Very much appreciated. Thank you both. Any other conversation or any questions from the counselors? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I make the motion that for the approval of the fire station remodel and to move forward with the bid process per city policy.
Motion on the table by Council Gerlington. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Council Gerlington, seconded by Council Todd. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Tammy, would you please call a roll vote?
Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Gerlington.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman. Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
That's a definite no.
Counselor Tracy.
Aye. Motion passes. Staff, are we good with that then? Jackie, you guys go forward and go into the bid process.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 13, Gladstone's Needed Housing Advisory Committee, appointment of committee member staff.
Thank you, city council. This is an exciting one. We've been doing a lot of work on our affordable housing initiatives. And what we're asking the council to do tonight is to appoint volunteers to what's called an ad hoc committee. And an ad hoc committee means it'll be a public body created by council for a particular purpose, issue or need. So the glad needed housing advisory committee came out of several major policy initiatives that we have done and in regards to the redevelopment and the downtown revitalization plan, the housing code audit, the housing needs assessment and the community engagement strategy. So not too long ago, the city council approved a contract for MIG to complete this work to the comprehensive plan and zoning code for us, which is required by June of 2022. And as part of that process, we need to have a housing advisory committee. We did an application process and in your packet, you will see that we received seven applications of Gladstone residents you'd like to serve. Specifically, it is Kristen Bowen, Stephanie Phipps, Elizabeth Weiss, Tony Bergeron, Karen Mint Howell, Joshua Carrillo and Stefan Hines. Their application is also in your packet. So you can learn a little bit about their interests. We think this group is going to meet at critical junctures in the work that we're doing and they'll provide informed feedback on draft amendments to the comprehensive plan and zoning code. And the housing advisory committee will also assist MIG and the city in connecting people from the many communities that this group will represent with the code rewrite effort. So with that, unless you have any questions, we are asking the city council to appoint these seven members to the Gladstone Needed Housing Advisory Committee.
Okay. So we're going to open for discussion, city council members. Anybody have questions or comments about this? Counselor Todd?
I am so excited about this. I mean, seven applications. We were sort of worried there for a little while. And knowing at least the, you know, the reputations of probably most of these people, this is pretty exciting. I, I think it's a really diverse group and I thank them for volunteering their time. So that's all I have to say.
Any other counselors have comments? Counselor Gerlington?
I would like to second what Counselor Todd said. I, well, well put. Thank you everyone for volunteering. It's exciting to volunteer. You get to meet new friends. It's, you know, I have a great time. Really, it'll be, it'll, it'll, it'll open your mind. So thank you again.
I would like to third, Counselor Todd, and now Counselor Gerlington. This is great. This is really exciting.
Any other comments? I'm going to have to agree with all the other counselors and their comments about all the folks that signed up. And I really appreciated the statements of interest and why folks signed up for this volunteer effort. And I think that these folks need to hear from us that this is a very important endeavor that they're about to, on which they're about to embark. I appreciate the thought put into their statements of interest and the details. And I think that we have folks who represent a lot of, a lot of different groups with regard to the industry, but also just citizens who have a real concern, you know, real need to be involved in what their community is going to look like. So I, I think it's fantastic and I really appreciate these folks who have stepped up. All right. Hearing no other.
Well, I, I agree. I have to agree. That's awesome. And I'm glad, I'm glad they all did, did step up and then volunteering is a great thing to do and you do learn a lot and this is going to help our community. So, thank you.
Okay. So somebody could put forward a motion on the staff recommendation if they desired to do so.
So we just, I just make a motion that we appoint the members to the Gladstone Needed Housing Advisory Committee.
Counselor Alexander, would you, do you mind reading the motions provided on 13, three, just the staff?
There was one. Okay.
Okay. No, there was, and you've covered most of it. I think you got a couple of sentences there though. We might want to include.
So right under staff recommendation?
Correct.
Okay. So I recommend that the city council appoint all seven citizens to the Gladstone Needed Housing Advisory Committee and their appointment will end once the work on the adapt, adaption ready amendments to housing related sections of the comprehensive plan and zoning code is complete by MIG and the city.
Okay. And I heard a second earlier to the original motion. Is the second still standing? Okay. So the motion was moved, the, the motion was put on the table by Counselor Alexander, seconded by Counselor Hartman. Is there any further discussion? All right, Tammy, will you please call a roll vote?
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Gerlington?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes, and the motion passes. Thank you very much. And I think this is very important work. So thank you to those citizens who are stepping up and, and doing this. I agree with all the counselors and their comments. Um, next we have agenda item number 14, which I don't have materials for is clackamas review, public records request. I'm sorry, records release request staff.
Thank you, city council. This comes at the request of Counselor Tracy Todd that asked that this be placed on the agenda. City Attorney Jacobs is going to go over specifically what the clackamas review has asked and have a discussion about whether or not the city council wants to agree to release privileged information.
Good evening, council. For the record, Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. So before you tonight, we have a question about, as, as city administrator best just explained, whether to waive the attorney client privilege and release certain communications between members of the city council and our office. As you may recall, the city received a public records request for emails between the city administrator and city council related to whether or not to schedule executive session related to a complaint that she had filed last summer. That, there were no records really responsive to that request and the records that were responsive that were between our office and the city council were withheld because of the attorney client privilege. Neither our office nor staff has the ability to. Neither our office nor staff has the ability to waive that privilege. So we didn't really have the ability to present this as an issue to the requister to say, okay, you know, we'll go ahead and provide these documents to you. The requister has since appealed this decision to the Clackamas County District Attorney's Office to see if they would order a release. In addition, last June, the requister specifically asked the council if they'd be willing to waive any privileges to release these documents. In a conversation about the appeal with the requister, I offered to bring this issue back up to you all to see if you wanted to have a discussion. As City Administrator Beth said, Counselor Todd did suggest that we put this on the agenda so you guys can have this discussion. And so the question before you tonight is whether or not to waive the privilege and release those emails between our office and the council related to scheduling an executive session last summer related to the complaint. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for the city attorney? Is there, Counselor Hartman?
Are, I mean, are there any reasons why we should not release these documents? I mean, at this point, everything is out there, so.
Thank you for the question, Counselor Hartman. Typically, we would probably, in most circumstances, not advise you to waive the privilege. In this particular situation, as you just suggested, most of the information related to the privileged communications has already been leaked and has been made available to the public without the city's consent. To a certain extent, that has created a bit of a vacuum about what exactly happened. And so for clarity purposes, and given the fact that, you know, releasing the communications that we're talking about really won't create any additional liability for the city, we would recommend that you go ahead and release this information.
Thank you.
Counselor Garland.
Oh, not, I was just, in case you asked me to vote. I, I, I hear what you're saying. I do.
Anyone else? Counselor Todd.
The reason that I, I wanted this to be put on the agenda was very much because of what Counselor Hartman had said was, at this point, you know, the attorney-client privilege has been dissolved in a lot of ways with this. And I feel like there's a narrative that's being put out there that's actually pretty much a false narrative. And I think that if we don't sort of, you know, fill that void with what, what was really sort of said between, in emails and such, then we're just sort of creating the problem. So I would like to move for that. I don't know if anybody else feels the same.
Like, can you remind me what documents exactly? Like, I'm just, I just am curious. What is it that we're releasing, I guess, since I, since I was a non-council at the time?
Sure. I don't have the documents to show you this evening because they're, they're still privileged. But in general, what they are, communications that are a follow-up to the, the communication that was released publicly about whether or not to schedule an executive session to discuss that advice that we have provided about how to proceed with complaint or if to pursue the complaint.
So it's not public knowledge. Who voted to have an executive session or not?
Yeah, there was no vote taken. Yeah, and so this would just be the documents that sort of went back and forth. As has been discussed publicly at your meeting earlier this summer, your special meeting. The way it played out is that while we had that request pending for an executive session, City Administrator Bats met with Counselor Tracy. They resolved this. City Administrator Bats sent me an email saying that she was satisfied with the results of that conversation. And she didn't feel a need to, for the council to move forward or have an executive session. I forwarded that email on to the council and that's sort of how everything got resolved. And so the, the emails would basically just be the actual written form of that communication, which you all kind of already discussed at your special meeting this summer anyways.
Sure, okay. And just so I'm hearing you correctly, it's not public knowledge. Who requested to have the executive session?
I, I don't know if it's public knowledge or not. I have not released that information. I believe that there may have been some members of the council who have discussed that publicly, but I wasn't privy to those conversations, so I can't say one way or the other.
Yeah, and the only reason why I'm asking is just because it was stated in a recent article that was released last week about who requested to have the session. So that's why I'm just curious. It's already out there, it's already out there, so. But I have no problem with it, you know, transparency, right? Like.
Yep. I'm Attorney Jacobs. So will it include that email that was sent to you from Administrator Bats that you forwarded to us? Will that be, that actual email will be sent? Or if we don't?
Yes.
Okay.
So any more discussion? I'd like to say for the record personally, had these emails been leaked or pushed out, they would have probably changed a lot of narrative. So I'm more than happy and eager for them to, to go out there. There was really, City Administrator's complaint. Her privacy and her, her position was not respected by members in our community. And honestly, out of respect for her, I was deferring to the council for whether or not they're going to release any kind of information. But I'm, I'm, I feel confident that these emails, at, at the very least, will answer a lot of questions for folks. And frankly, I can't believe we've spent so much time and energy on this issue. But we are and we are, we have. Do you, we want to vote on this, I, I would assume?
Counselor Tracy, we did receive a request to speak on this.
Okay.
President.
Thank you. Counselor Garland.
It's my request and I'd like to withdraw that request.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other, any other public comment on this topic, Tammy?
We do not.
Okay.
I have one more question. I'm sorry.
Counselor Todd.
Um, I just wanted to know, Chad, does this, because we are giving our consent for this or if we do give our consent for this information to release, does that put us in any place with other attorney-client privilege stuff? Does that give us some sort of weighted, if Mr. Rendelman requested something else, else about another whole other scenario? Does that, like, well, you did it once, you know, you gave me the information. Does that at all weigh out in that?
Legally, no. Legally, you have the opportunity to maintain the privilege in separate matters as much as you want or to waive that privilege as much as you want. In the court of public opinion, I'll leave that to you all to decide whether or not this is precedent setting that, you know, would force you to require to waive the privilege. I think from a personal perspective, that these are pretty unique facts and unique circumstances, given the leak that occurred and everything else. Which is why, you know, I don't really have any heartburn advising you that it would be okay to waive the privilege here. Whereas, you know, for example, there was a request, the same request to, earlier this summer, to release advice related to the removal of a, a city, a member of a city committee. And I would advise you not to release that advice, you know, because of threatened litigation. So, you know, I think there's a good example of situations where there's distinct differences as to why you would do so in one situation and not the other. But whether or not that plays in the court of a public opinion, I'll leave for you all to decide.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
City Administrator Bets, should we tee this up as a motion? Or could somebody make a motion on this so we have a full council vote? Is that the advice from the city, from staff going forward on this particular topic?
Yes, I think that would be the best approach.
Okay.
I'll make the motion. I don't have anything to read, though.
I was going to actually ask the city attorney's advice on a, on a potential, on the potential verbiage for the, for the motion.
I, I think you can make a motion to waive the attorney-client privilege to allow the release of public records related to communications between the city council and the city attorney's office about holding an executive session in response to the complaint filed July of two thousand and twenty by the city administrator.
Don't move.
Perfect.
Can we adopt that? So we've adopted that. Do we hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So Counselor Todd made the motion with the help of the city administrator, or city attorney and the city administrator. Counselor, Counselor Garland seconded. Do we have further discussion on this? And we don't have any other public comments. So Tammy, could you take a roll call vote for this, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
All right, so the motion passes. I thank you all for your help with this and we're waiving those privileges. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, I have business carry forward.
I have, I have nothing further tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Followed up with business from the audience. Do we have some folks who need to speak to us?
Yes, we do. We have two. The first is Mark Zimpong.
Okay. Please welcome Mark in.
Hello again. Thank you again. And thank you all for your efforts and thank you, yeah, just in general for letting me speak. As I was saying earlier, I've been trying to review the site plan, the master site plan for the parks in general, as well as the Gladstone Nature Park. My daughter played, my two daughters played Gladstone soccer. And so we were kind of upset that there was fees implemented at Meltrum Bar. And talked to some of you about that. Thank you, Greg. And, and yeah, just wanted to try to get more clear, or ask you all for kind of what you already agreed to do, which is, you know, really kind of look at some of these things and talk them out. And I would just say, as a community member, it feels like we are, you know, trying to generate this pot of money to do something with. And the only thing I can find that we have actually documented as far as parks is that, you know, it would be going towards the Gladstone Nature Park, which at the end of that plan says that the improvements of that will cost one point one million dollars. And that involves buying a house and putting in toilets. And all this is after the installation of the water tanks. Because that, the location of the water tanks is going to affect where you're going to put paved pathways. And it may cover some of those things. And so it just feels that as a citizen, there was, there was not a lot of clarity on some of these things. And so I thank you in that and just wanted to, I think I'm going to go talk to this administrator Bets and, you know, get some more personalized questions answered out. And, yeah, just try to, to understand greater about this. It's a learning process for me. I've not been involved in city government and trying to in this way. The one question I do have that you may or may not answer because we're in the general assembly time is if we did move forward in the nature park site plan, given it is over a million dollar price tags, is that something that would then get bumped to the voters? Or is that something that does not, you know, require voter approval because it would be piecemealed? Seems all together because it's a master site plan and it has a price tag. But just didn't know if, you know, that, that was going to be broken down. And what I'm talking about is it looked like four hundred thousand dollars for the house there. And as I said, the bathrooms and things like that, which are all still developing. And quite honestly, I think, you know, from two years ago, that price of that house has probably gone up. So, so I think it's, that's just more my comment. And then my dog sitting here biting me, so I'll say that when you talk about parks, off-leash park areas is something many, many, it's come up many, many times. And so I'm just going to advocate for that, so. And I understand there have been people that have put a lot of time and effort into all different aspects of it. Be admin, administrators doing the paperwork behind the, uh, thing. Be it, you know, Fognath, who's done a great job rehashing the park and those things. So just thank you to everyone involved and thank you all for your efforts moving forward, really analyzing what's going on with the parks and these plans. Thank you.
Counselor Alexander?
Yeah, I just want to thank Mark for his concern and his interest and he does his research and he showed up and he had good questions. And I tried to get him some answers and I'm just happy that he's involved like he is. And, and I appreciate his time. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Tammy, do we have somebody?
We do. The second and final is Jerry Blakeney. We're trying to get him on here. Hold tight for just a moment. Sorry about that.
No worries. Can you hear me? Terrific.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, well, good evening. Tonight's meeting was refreshing and seemed congenial. Focused on action for our community. It was probably one of our better-led meetings that I've attended. So I want to thank you all definitely for staying on track and, and maybe leaving all of the usual drama behind. So thanks for that. The real reason why I wanted to comment was the clackamas reveal. It's quickly become the city of Gladstone's rumor rag, overwhelmingly supporting whatever position seems to help the mayor and her skewed worldview. Their July thirtieth fanfiction regarding City Administrator Bets' withdrawn complaint was barely worth calling reporting. It largely parroted Bill Osborne's conspiracy theories without any original attempt to get the full story. The current and past counselors who were quoted anew in this piece should be embarrassed. And the person who wrote it, if that's what we're calling writing, should be embarrassed that they didn't actually get firsthand quotes from people directly involved in this process. Mayor Stimples, then two days later, followed by Mayor Stimples' twenty-five-hundred-word grudge list that was only served to rehash Tammy's greatest hits of how she has been wronged and everyone she meets is mean, unfair, and she's ultimately right. This is my point. I recommend the city seriously reevaluate their relationship with Pamplin Media, the parent company of the clackamas review, if the quality of their content continues and/or if counselors continue to air out their dirty laundry in the so-called newspaper. The fact that the city pays Pamplin Media money to do a service that, yes, is unrelated to the propaganda that they publish, but that the propaganda they publish is in favor of the mayor is inappropriate and should stop. We should not be paying a vendor to report news that is slanted towards one side or the other. It should be balanced if the city is going to continue to pay them as a vendor, but I recommend they not. That's it. Thank you so much for a good meeting. I appreciate your, the time to speak with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy, do we have any, any other folks for public comment?
We do not.
Okay, we're moving down the agenda to business from the council. Who would like to go first? Counselor Ripley, how about you?
Sure. I had one thing I was going to comment on, but I think Jerry nailed it. This has probably been the most civil meeting that we've had in two and a half years, so I'm going to leave my comment at home. And leave it at that, because it's been, it's been too mellow to be adding any discussions right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Alexander. I think you're just down below him on my Brady Bunch screen.
Okay, um, I had, I had, so I've, I've been out talking to a lot of citizens on Portland Avenue about the revitalization, getting a lot of conversations, probably over a hundred of them in the last month or so. And one of them had a, had a question. I just don't know who I, who I direct this to. But they'd like to know if in the city newsletter that we could put how much the kiosk made each month at the park. That's something they said they'd like to see it now. And so I don't know who does that or if we can do it or who we have to talk to. The other one would be, my next thing was, um, they had a first responders meeting at the Happy Valley Park the other night. And Counselor Hartman was there and I was there and we got to meet a whole bunch of different counselors and, and mayors and everything. And it was just sad that, that I heard a couple of negative comments, you know, about our council. And I was hoping, I want to go back to what Counselor Ripley said. And I think we need to have more work sessions and, and, and be more on page and get along together and, and just make this, you know, so we don't, we aren't the people that, you know. so we don't, we aren't the people that, you know, boy, your, your city council means entertaining. Boy, interesting to say the least. You know, I mean, I don't, I don't want to be part of that council. Okay. I want to be, I want to be one that's sharp and on top of stuff and everything. And then I'll go into, I, I got my email. I'm sure you all got the email. I didn't know, but so. I voted and I want, we, we, we need the investigation, but the way I read, and so I'm asking this to you, I guess, Chad would be, is that $250 an hour open ended contract? I mean, we voted, yes, we want the investigation, but then we never heard any more word. Is there any, is there any parameters? Is there any not to exceed amount? I mean, I'm just wondering how we go with that. Where's that go?
Councillor Alexander, there's not a not to exceed amount because you don't necessarily know what's going to unfold in the investigation. There is a scope of work in the, in the contract that sort of outlines the normal process and gives us a general idea of how many hours. There was a delay, as I think I informed all of you because of some personal issues that the investigator had with some family issues that delayed the, the process. And so that's what's taking us a longer amount of time. It's not that she's spending an inordinate amount of time doing the investigation. It just got delayed because of the family issue that she had to deal with.
Okay. I just wondered, we, you know, I just wanted to make sure we weren't going off a cliff there. But, um, and then I guess I'd say last is, uh, and, and she told me I could say this. So we have Lynn Nelson, who you all know, who's been a big part of this community. He's volunteered many, many hours. He worked with the senior citizens. He's on the planning commission, the city council. That's, and that's Mayor Stimples' father and he's in a bed right now and hospice is there. And so I'd just like everyone to say a prayer that he just passes peacefully. And that'll be all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Alexander. Councillor Hartman.
Thank you. Sorry, internet. Thank you. Um, I, so I, it's more of an update. The first thing I say, I have, I was asked to join the Clackamas County Indigenous Task Force. And over the past several months, we've been working very diligently to create an inclusive land acknowledgement for our county as a whole. And I'm very excited to say that we are very close to being done and it was done very thoughtfully and very inclusive, including all of the tribes that were on these lands before. And we, there will be a celebration during Indigenous Day. And so I just wanted to share that with you because, you know, it's near, dear to my heart. Um, I've also joined the National League of Cities. They are creating an indigenous caucus throughout the, the country and learning a lot of great things on inclusivity in that part, which is really exciting. So I hope to have more to report back on that as the coming months. Um, I want to take this opportunity to thank Chief Schmerber and Councillor Alexander. Both of us and councillor Alexander, thank you. We've been doing some really great work with providing our community with a platform that connects our citizens and our community members with our police department should they have something to express. And it seemingly been going really well. Uh, you know, we, we, we both kind of target different audiences and, and are able to communicate that and see if it's something that we can help, you know, build that connection. And Chief Schmerber has been amazing with responding and listening. And so I just wanted to take that moment to say thank you. Um, I do have two like questions and then one more comment. We have the heat wave coming. I haven't heard anything about Cooling Center and I just wanted to know what is going on with that. Um, if we can answer that first.
So the social media posts that go out this afternoon, the senior center is open during the week, as is the Gladstone Library. And we also have the Hillside Church that is going to be providing opportunities throughout the weekend. So yes, we have put that information out to the public.
Okay, perfect. Sorry, I must have missed that. Um, and then the other question I, well, it kind of was just more of a discussion. Maybe for a future. Let me wrap that. Okay. I agree with councillor Alexander in terms of like work session. Um, there obviously are things within our council that we have to discuss. And I really appreciated having those work sessions in this casual environment where we can be collaborative and talk through things. And one of those things is I keep getting asked about city events. And I know we can't answer that right now, but just we can add it maybe somewhere down that everyone is seeing other cities move forward with having community events and all of these things. And I know we're different and we don't have the same staff as other cities. And so, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there that people are, are asking. And again, with councillor Alexander's point of hearing negative comments about council, one of the other things is it was really nice to see councillor Alexander at this Happy Valley thing. You know, I, I went with a friend and it was nice to see and sort of network and connect with others. And, and what we saw were several other cities working in tandem together. And, and, and they went and they were supportive and it was just sort of like, oh, Gladstone sort of left out. And so I'm hopeful that we can get to a place where we can, you know, we can do that. Um, and obviously, you know, councillor Ripley, there's, there's things that I want to learn more about your concerns with the fire department. And I think that those things can be discussed in a work session where we can have this collaborative conversation. Um, the last thing that I want to say, and I had this written previous to today, but I still want to state it and put it on the record, is that I do want to take the moment to bring back our discussion of, about our council rules. I know that, you know, a little bit ago, we talked about having a work session on these with a facilitator. And I know that there have been some disruptions and it's been put on the back burner, which is unfortunate. But I want to bring it back because I don't feel like these council rules have any purpose. Specifically, you know, section E dash K and section G 1 A B. Um, I feel like, you know, we need to discuss what the purpose of these council rules are and what repercussions are going to be in place to hold each other accountable for when one of us breaks it. Um, this negativity and the disruption make it incredibly difficult to do our jobs. All of the things that I'm feeling and the questions and the connecting, talk about all these disparaging articles and all the negativity in the media and all of these things. When I think most of you can agree that it's really exhausting and that we need to get back to, to bring this back, to work through whatever issues it is that we have, because I think our, I, I want to say that I, our community is tired of this and is tired of seeing Gladstone written in a negative light. Um, and I'm hoping that all of us can come together in this conversation and, and come into it with vulnerability and humility. Um, you know, and, and with that being said, uh, I have to ask you all questions because it's something that's been really weighing on me since the article came out written by Mayor Stimple last week. And, and those of you that have given me an opportunity, which most of you have, should know that I take great pride in myself in growing and learning and being transparent. And so if anyone here believes that I am uncivilized or I am not transparent or I am not accountable as it is listed in public, I want to ask you to reach out to me because I want to have a conversation. I'm not perfect. I want to grow. And I, I want to learn from if there are any mistakes. And I'm willing to listen and learn unlike some. So give me a call, reach out to me and let me know if you agree with those things. Um, but moving forward, I, I do want to put work sessions back on the table and, and really get, get this, air the grievances out and get back to work because I would like to do the work that I ran to do. So that's, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Todd.
Well, I really have nothing to say after that. Um, I appreciate the input from councillor Hartman. At the end, I also appreciate, I appreciate all of you. Actually, I appreciate that we know that. It's been really tough around here for a while and for all of us and for all of us in different ways and some more than others and some less and, and me seeing the town that I adore in such a negative light and having clients of mine walking in and bringing it up and talking. I just would really like to get back to this. This was really a great meeting. Um, I don't know. I, I thought it was going to be a long meeting, so I'm not going to talk anymore because we're coming out at eight o'clock here. Um, but that's all. I just wanted to thank all of you for your input tonight.
Thank you. And councillor Garlington.
Hi. So I'll start with some of the meetings that I went, went to. I, um, Mayor Stimple, of course, was not at the Parks Board meeting last night, so I did go to that. And the report that the pickleball court project is going as planned, I believe there was, you know, there's little things going on, but they are moving forward and everything's going fine. The Meldrum Bar site plan timeline, I, uh, I should have brought this up earlier too, but they're saying 90 days. So that was kind of a good thing. Um, the advisory board has been really busy to, excuse me, touring all of our parks. So when we talk about having meetings with the parks, I think it's really important that we include the Parks Board. That's why they're there. I think their, their input and their perspective on what they see and, and the projects that they've been to or that, that they've looked over. I think it's really important to, to make sure that we don't dismiss the work that they do. They're, they are there for a reason. And, uh, we do have two plans. One would be the Parks Master Plan and the other is the Nature Park Site Plan. And the third will be the Meldrum Bar Site Plan. And so, um, you know, I, I, I ask everyone to make sure that you look at those. Um, there's a wealth of information in them. They talk about what we need to get done, where those funds can come from, uh, what they're going to cost. And, you know, as councillor Tracy said, shoot, everything is doubled. So you got to kind of be careful about reading those dollar amounts, but there are dollar amounts there. They do talk about, like I said, where the funds are going to come from. So. I, I, I urge you all to really take a look at that plan. It was well written. There's a lot of citizen input in it. I know it's a few years old, but if you don't get a chance to look at anything else in the middle of it, there's a spreadsheet, 1117 spreadsheet that really lays out what our parks, what, what small projects would add to our parks. In simple ways. And, and so it's about finding the funding for that and, and that sort of thing. That's time consuming. So those are the kind of projects that I like to see our parks work on, identifying the issue, finding the funding and then bringing it back to us. But I am all about the conversation and the work plan and the work party on our parks. I'm just going to go back to the fact that I think people come to Gladstone because of our parks. So we want to keep them coming. We want people to enjoy them. We want people to be safe at all of them. We were on channel 12 this morning as being one of the busiest parks at High Rocks when it gets hot. So, you know, that's another place. We want to make sure everybody there is safe. So, okay, off that soapbox. Then, um, the senior center has had its soft opening. That's super wonderful. We love hearing that people are coming back and gathering a little bit more carefully, I hope, but gathering. And the senior center advisory board is really busy looking at options for classes and offerings for everybody and what that's going to look like when everybody comes back and what we can offer that community on a daily basis, on a monthly basis, you know, and, and getting people back together. So that, that senior center board, they are just, they're ready to go. So they're kind of an exciting group to be with and, and, and fun to watch and how excited they are about getting everything done or getting things done anyway. Um, the li, I'm, I'm on the library board. It's the one that's with North Oak Grove. And there's not a whole lot going on. If honestly, if something really exciting comes up, I'll be the first one to shoot out an email or bring it back to everybody. But, um, there's still just a lot of planning going on and, um, lots of side meetings on what's happening with the libraries. Clearly, none of, nobody's broken ground yet, but there's still a lot of things happening. And a lot of, I'm spending a lot of time discussing what's happening next. So that's really good news. Um, I'd like for everyone to really reach out to their neighbors this week when it gets hot. Knock on a door and just say, how are you doing? If you've got a next door neighbor and you know that they, they're supposed to be running their air conditioning and that unit's not running, knock on their door, make sure they're okay. See if they need a ride to the senior center. If you don't feel comfortable opening your house up for one reason or another, I know sometimes, you know, at my house, all of a sudden it becomes, we've got 10 people in here and to fit one more person in, wow. But they need and that neighbor that has a smiling face and a bag of ice, if that's what somebody needs. So I, I, I ask everyone to really make a concerted effort to, I mean, just make an effort to reach out to somebody or two or three people. It doesn't take much time and it, you might meet somebody you never knew. So that's all I have to say. And everybody have a really good week and stay cool.
Thank you, councillor. I think I covered everybody except for myself. So I, I wanted to make a couple of comments. I'm going to keep it light tonight because I think we had a pretty successful meeting. I appreciate everybody and their debates and discussions on items. I think we can work together and I agree with all the councillors and the sentiments on this issue. Um, to Mr. Zempel, as he was speaking earlier about parks, and I think councillor Garlington would, would probably agree with this. We are in catch-up mode in the city in very many ways across the board. So, you know, it's going to take us a while and nothing's ever going to be perfect. And I think to councillor Garlington's point, it would be a good idea for the council to go back and review that master plan, Parks Master Plan from 2017 and, and the subsequent plans that have been put together. And I'm excited about the fact that we will, will be addressing the Meldrum Bar site as well. But, you know, nothing's really perfect in the city, obviously, and we're in a catch-up mode. And so some of these decisions may feel a little reactionary, but to councillor Garlington's point, again, there is an, a plan, an implementation plan that's laid out and then we can follow some of that plan. And four years old, it's a plan that's four years old. So we're going to need to refresh probably amongst the council and obviously Park Advisory Board to make sure that that plan is really kind of up to date in certain ways. And we can move forward as a council to do that. But that's not just the only thing in the city, obviously, that we're playing catch up with our infrastructure across the board. And these aren't popular items for folks because obviously sewer and water is not necessarily what, what they call, you know, the sexy item, so to speak, in a city's, in a city's management, but it is, it is indeed essential for us. I also would like to echo councillor Garlington about checking in on your neighbors. And I, and I'm hoping that our city staff and our police department will make some effort to do, if nothing else, even cruise, drive-bys or cruise-throughs on those manufactured home neighborhoods that are on River, River Road. Quite frankly, those are the people who were impacted the most and who lost their lives in the last extreme heat event. My understanding through reading a, a quick read through on the Multnomah County report was that a lot of folks that live in those particular residences and in those neighborhoods were highly impacted by the heat. This is very hot and we all know that. I have a crew that works outdoors and we will shut down our operations at two o'clock on both Thursday and Friday. It is extremely hot when you're at 105, 107 degree heat indexing, standing on 165 degree concrete or pavement. We, this is maybe our new normal. And so we're going to have to adapt and this city will be impacted by this new normal as well. And it will be costly, I, I think, going into the future for us as well. That being said, I thank you all for all your work. I appreciate you allowing me to run the meeting tonight. It was, you know, there was a little start and stops on things, but I think we got through it. Would anybody like to call for adjournment, put a motion forward? Councillor Ripley?
I will call for that, but one thing I was going to talk to Jackie about, I didn't make our meeting this week. We, just because we left the old city hall, it shouldn't look like an abandoned building. There's a lot of dry grass around it. We need to get somebody to mow some of that so we don't burn anything down. It looks like a dilapidated building, the taller the grass gets. But I was going to mention that the other day, but I didn't make our meeting. So that we just need the most dead grass over there. That's all I got, but I will make a motion to adjourn.
Councillor Alexander, motion to second under the motion or you?
Well, yeah, I just have one quick comment. You were talking about that. So we did have, we Gladstone did have, and, and I confirmed it the other day, we had a heat related death right there. When you go past Cracksburger on Webster and you turn left on the Las Berties, those blue apartments on the right. And I talked to the neighbor Anne and she And I talked to the neighbor Anne and she said, you know, Rosemary called her every night and the night she didn't call her, she went over there and had Jimmy in the back door and they found her, found her dead on, on the ground. And then she followed up and it was a heat-related death. And she said she wished she would have known earlier to go over and take her somewhere or have her come over to her apartment or something. So, so we can by checking on people, maybe avoid that again here in Gladstone, hopefully.
Very much appreciated. Thank you. Were you also seconding the motion for adjournment?
Yes, I was. Yes, yes.
Yes, we had a motion to adjourn by Counsel Ripley, second by Counselor Alexander. Tammy, would you call a roll vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Gerlington?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Hi, and uh, meeting's adjourned at eight nineteen. Thank you very much, everybody.